All right, good evening, folks. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It appears that we do not have a quorum for this work session, but we are going to proceed on and we will, in a work session, we don't have the powers to vote on anything anyway. Work sessions are fact-finding missions and for folks, the council, to acknowledge the topic that we have at hand also, for the public to be able to hear exactly what is going on as well. So, we are one short. Takes four to have a quorum, three, four board members and myself to have a quorum. So, that's where we are. Again, repeating, this was not a voting meeting anyway. So, tonight, we will be acting as citizens, just like you are, and we'll be happy to answer any questions as we possibly can. So, with that being said, I will introduce Mr. Charlie Smith from Barge Whammer Southern Cannon. And of course, tonight, we're here to talk about some of the flooding issues that took place back some months ago, to see if we can make steps toward a situation never happens again. Hopefully, that's our goal. So, Charlie, I'll turn it over to you. If you'll come on up. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. And we've taken a good look at the situation and I feel like we understand kind of what some of the options are. Andrew is going to do, Andrew Murrick is going to do a short presentation and then we're both available to answer questions.
Thank you.
We're going to do a short presentation soon.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I'm headed to go, I don't know.
I turned it off because it's...
Just coming on now, Charlie.
Okay. Maybe a little slow. It's coming on now. And as Charlie was saying, I'm Andrew Barm in our Knoxville office with Barge and I'll be brief, so we'll answer questions if anything more technical and we'll go probably fairly quickly through these slides here, but we studied, flip over one more and... Well, and as he's doing that, next slide is basically just going to show something I don't know if I say, it's just an area picture of the flooding that obviously 111-52 flooded. So, the area around the pond was what we were studying, trying to figure out how to alleviate that area. There we go. And this is an aerial shot I think we had pulled off of, off of a state website to show the extent of some of the flooding. I think it may have been worse than this at one time, but just shows where you had flooding over the roadways, different parcels flooded. The next one shows, so what we did was we went and considered the drainage area coming into that, just to get an idea of what flows came during that seven-day event. So, it's about 2.67 square mile area. We also looked, as we looked at some alternatives, at some other drainage areas in town, see was there a way to divert some of this water. And this shows the old topographic map of the site and this map is probably, you know, some of that's probably 30 years old or so on there. And as you can see, I don't know if you see the areas around 52, off to the west of 52, there are some sinkholes over on that side, there's a lot of low areas. So, some of what's happened over the years, just some of the areas where this would have flooded have been filled in over the, over time. So, some of the storage has been gone, so what they've, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Finish this up, I was talking about this slide.
Yeah, I'm just saying, some of the areas have obviously been filled. If you were to pull in an aerial of what's there now, there has been some filling in the area, so there has been some storage that, you know, 30 years ago was, was available and it just made the flooding a little worse if you, over time.
Yeah, I have a question about this particular slide. You said this is an old map?
It's a topographic map, USGS, so the original, the base map was probably done in the 60s or 70s.
Right.
And then the aerial stuff in purple was put on after that, I don't know when the high school was built, it was sometime...
Okay, so, even though it's an old map, do the sinkhole, the areas designated as sinkholes, which I understand, I want to make, I'd like to ask you to clarify those so that everyone here understands what a sinkhole, what areas are designated as sinkholes. Is it still, it's an old map, but are those designated areas still applicable? Are they still...
They are still the areas where everything's flowed.
Okay, all right. So, if you or Charlie would then just go up to the slide here on the screen, just to show the people that are here, an example of what these lines are and that that designates, that that entire area within that circle is a designated sinkhole as determined by the United States...
Yeah, it's a sinkhole or a closed area depression, so unless the water's going to flow into there and there is no way out.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Look at Dillon Pond specifically.
Mm-hmm.
If you notice, it has the line around the outside. Charlie, can you point to that?
Yeah.
All right. So, if you, right down in the corner where 111-52 meet, my question is, is Pat's business, is Lee's business, are those businesses located inside that designated sinkhole area?
We don't know which ones they are, but then you can put an area on there and I'm guessing that there's...
Somewhere around here.
Yes, to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the businesses are right here, so they're right close to it.
All right. And the way I understand it, over the years, the more we develop on top of designated sinkhole areas, the less...
The less storage you have.
The less storage that excess water has to go. Another example is the high school, Williamson Academy. If you'll notice, it's built right on top of the designated sinkhole area. I think that was a big surprise to our superintendent, the schools were recently in a meeting. They're having, they're having, the water table's been so hot, they're having damage to the gymnasium floor because water is seeping up subgrade underneath that slab. They're having to replace the wood floor in the gymnasium. It's built over a sinkhole. We have businesses built on top of sinkhole, designated sinkhole areas. This was a very enlightening slide for me personally, to come to find out that we're, you know, we're developing property on top of sinkhole areas, specifically our high school. So, I just keep that in mind as we go through this discussion, I think it's important.
It isn't particularly uncommon, you know, for that to occur, but over time, you have to recognize that as you take up the capacity for flood storage, there's typically going to be a problem number of...
Right. Go to the next one.
Does anybody have any questions about that particular slide, Tony?
And I'll be real brief, this was basically just where we modeled the storm event, went in and put it in a computer vault, took the rainfall from the vent and basically, what you had was a long drawn-out event. And basically, I'm pointing back to this, because when you look at a design event, typical engineers will build a 24-hour event, which is just a tremendous amount of water in a 24-hour period. You all had a, you know, different size event than what we really designed for. Really just, just saying that for now, because it actually really was not on the grand scheme of things, a huge, huge event, but it was a very large event.
And what, as far as the lines on the graph, this blue line here represents the amount of water that happened during that February storm, which is a lot of water, but because it was spread over a long time, what Andrew's point was that these, these lines here are more typical storm events. What I mean by, I don't mean typically that they happen a lot, typically that you designed for. So, what you see is that the peak of a typical storm event is above what we actually even saw in February. So, yes, there was, it was a flood, but in terms of a design storm, it was only maybe like a seven-year, eight-year storm.
Few slides, thanks much, and that's really more about engineering, just applying what you designed to. So, we looked at three different alternatives. We looked at, all right, if you took the, took a pipe, tried to take some of the flow off down the town creek, is that a possibility? We looked, thinking about, you know, just other ways to alleviate, no, believe you all pumped it out that way, some after the fact. We looked at that pipe plus some additional storage. What we found out, looking at that one second, was that just putting a pipe down, a 30-inch pipe running it down, I believe, Second Street? No, Spruce, Spruce, right, that's Spruce Street, was, was enough to relieve some of the flooding, but it would not hit a 100-year design flood. So, that was the reason I showed them that design storm, it still wouldn't satisfy, you know, which if there's a 100-year flood event, it would not satisfy that criteria, just putting 30-inch pipe in. So, we looked at a 30-inch pipe and some additional storage, if we could go across 111 or, you know, anything adjacent to it and could dig out some area, that was the other option. And then the third option was looking at, you know, repairing or what we could do to the sinkhole to at least keep it as is or maybe make it better.
If that water had not been in that pond over there, we wouldn't have no flood. That water table's come over across 52 now.
Yes.
Steel standard.
The city is planning on paying me to take care of that water, because they backed it up on me. And if that had been down, we could detect another inch or two of water before it had done any flood. Over the years, that sinkhole will have to go. Now, another thing, you've got sinkholes over at that school, what if that falls out like it did in Bowling Green at the Corvette thing? And here was a bunch of kids, then what are we going to do? Same Dixie?
Well, and...
That's something to think about.
It'd be a whole different scenario.
Yeah, so, Carl, I think that schools, engineers are working on that, so, he, he, we don't know what he thinks about...
Too technical about that.
Perhaps not.
Well, it's not technical, it's nothing but the facts.
Oh, no, you're kidding, well, I'm sorry, just the type of engineering, but it brings up the underground engineering, basically.
You can look back over the years and tell, years ago, we didn't, it was dry over in that slide.
And it's not dry.
We rode bicycles, motorcycles, so me, Kenny's dad and them did.
So, let's get through the presentation.
Okay.
And we will answer all the questions from the public, I promise, but let's go ahead and get through the presentation and then we'll have a time for other questions.
Okay, I want to make sure we mentioned that the, we also looked at the simplest thing first, which was using the existing storm sewer system that connects right at the fire station.
Yeah, we tried to see if we could tie into the existing system, it's running through town already and it was just, it was undersized. We couldn't, didn't want to put any more water in yet.
The biggest reason there being that the, the pump that was used, what you guys had a six-inch pump out there for most of the time and then you end up going to an eight and you could put a 12 or 15-inch pipe into that system and we knew that that wouldn't completely prevent a flood, but we wanted to understand how much would it help? And it would help, however, kind of the situation you were talking about, if there's already a bunch of water in the system and you start draining through that small system over the fire station and then more rain keeps happening, you could actually have flooding in that neighborhood where the, where the pipe system exists, because that capacity would have already been taken up. So, it, it would help, but it would also come at, at risk of putting that part of the neighborhood at, at higher risk. So, that, that's why we didn't proceed further with that one.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
In the 1950s, at this time of year, there was corn growing in that pond, in that, Frick Malcolm Hill grew corn in that dark hill sun and owned it. And it was dry, it dried in the summertime.
As I said, one of the things we'd looked at was trying to take a, a pipe off of that to take some of the flow off, so we ran basically a 30-inch pipe, put, build a structure across the road, took a 30-inch pipe down and tied it into Town Creek, just to see how much that would alleviate the flooding. And it did alleviate some of that storm event, but it would not alleviate a 100-year design storm. That was the reason for saying this, may not be the best, would not be a best alternative just because it would not be a, a criteria that you ultimately want to hit. And the other thing that would be an issue too, because I'm assuming you also had flooding on Town Creek at that town?
No.
Not much? Okay, then it might not be that, but it would take water on the Town Creek, so you'd have to evaluate, would that be a problem if you put water over there?
Are you answering the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just saying that would be something else to evaluate, if we put it in, just making sure that it doesn't create a problem in Town Creek.
Yeah, when we was running it down the spring in Church Street and the water was going in, we didn't see a big rise into Town Creek during the time.
Well, that wouldn't be a way to alleviate some of the issues, but would not, it would not have the larger design effect.
Right.
Yeah, so, and Andrew, you didn't know this, I, you had worked with Adrian, Adrian had a opinion on that, so he couldn't read your tonight, but Adrian did this part. He looked at the, the model that was available for Town Creek, the hydrographs, no coincidence, so it looks like he could put water in Town Creek.
Okay.
The, the challenge was that, like you said, the, it would have prevented the event that happened in February, so the 30-inch pipe would take care of that event, but because that event didn't even meet the typical criteria for a design storm, you probably wouldn't do it, because you, you want to do more than that, because it would be very hard to get funding for something that didn't meet the 100-year storm. So, I realize that's too much information.
And yet, that was the option that, when we empowered you, that we kind of felt like might be the most reasonable one.
Yeah.
Would be to, you know, create 30-inch pipe, dump it into Town Creek, you only got enough.
And that, it would have prevented the, the February event, but it wouldn't meet the 100-year criteria.
And therefore, we wouldn't qualify for probably federal funding because it, because it wouldn't meet that design requirement?
Yeah, unlikely. Probably wouldn't qualify.
Okay.
So, the other alternative we looked at to meet that 100-year was basically the 30-inch pipe and then excavating somewhere in that basin, almost like putting another tension pump, but excavating out about 100 acre feet, which is about half a million yards of material out of somewhere in that basin, that you would basically allow that area to flood. So, that would just offset the storage over the years, you know, not there anymore.
So, in other words, all the development, I mean, all the parking areas, all of the, you know, once grown-up swamp areas that have been filled with dirt, stone and gravel are all taking away from the storage that we have in a flood event?
Yeah, and what this would add, try to add storage back to it, basically to allow that area to flood, so it doesn't flood somebody's property or the roads. And then the, third thing we looked at was trying to, just looking at the sinkhole itself and looking at the, the injection well. We looked at what needed to be done out there and it looked like, when you look down in it, you can see water's hitting the rock on the bottom, so it doesn't look like it's clogged. But what, what you've got is the injection well, the riser pipe itself is getting undercut, so it looks like you do need to go in there and do some repair work on that, some work with scouring underneath it. There is a little bit of a, another sinkhole that's opening just, I believe, to the north of it.
Yeah.
That looks like it probably needs to be, you know, filled in, just to take in that and save what's there now, the stand pipe. And we have, just have some real preliminary talk with T. Day, who said that would be done under like a maintenance-type agreement from a permit, for example, it wouldn't be a, would not be a permitting if necessary issue.
Is this the only slide that you have of the existing sinkhole?
It is.
Stand pipe?
It is.
Okay, so, a couple of questions. There's been, you know, many theories floating around town about the fact that, you know, the city, quote, came in there 35 years ago and filled it with concrete and that's why it's not draining and that's why we have flood. What I'd like to ask you is, based on what you see in this photograph and have seen out on the ground, does it appear that, that the city has done anything to cause this sinkhole not to drain? What's your professional opinion about what you see out there in, in relation to what I'm describing?
So, Alderman, when we came here a couple of months after the event, I mean, we were here during the event, but when we came back and met with you all and proposed a scope to, to look at this, about, look at what alternative we have, we knew that there was a sinkhole out here, that in what I, we, I don't want to be confusing about sinkhole. When we looked at that USGS map, these whole areas that don't have any outlet are referred to as sinkholes. When I'm talking about a sinkhole right now, I'm talking about a physical location where water drains.
The lower right of that line?
That's right.
Okay.
Also, the lower left, which doesn't look like it, but it is. So, before the water came down, we had never seen physically what it looked like. So, when the water came down, what we found was that there actually was an injection well constructed. An injection well's purpose is to hold the throat of that sinkhole open to try to maximize its efficiency and effectiveness over time to allow water to drain. So, when we first came here, not knowing that it was an injection well, we just thought it was a natural sinkhole. What we talked with you about was, hey, when we get down there, if it's practical, you might want to build an injection well. Well, when the water came down and we saw it, we see that it is an injection well. So, the point being that what was constructed some number of years ago is exactly what we would have recommended be constructed in order to try to protect that throat of that sinkhole to allow water to drain, which is what it's doing.
So, what, so what was constructed was, helps the drainage, not hurt the drain?
It, it is, yeah, it helps it to the degree that it has not allowed that throat to collapse.
It wasn't due in a region, it was, it was, it was to make it drain better?
It was to, it was to try to protect that so that it could drain for a long time. And, and that's exactly the type of thing we would have recommended. So, now that we've seen it, what we see is that it appears to still be functional. You can look, if you stand on top of that grid, you can see the rock below it, it's clear and water drains into it. So, it appears to be functional, which is very good. The, the challenge is that because it was constructed so long ago, it needs some maintenance on it to, again, protect it so that that throat doesn't, you, you can't keep a sinkhole permanently, but you can do what you can to try to protect it as a functioning sinkhole, which is what was done, but the, the measure that was constructed some number of years ago needs to have, or maybe it's done to, to try to further protect it. So, but the challenge, Kelly, is what you mentioned earlier, that when the hole, when there's been a bunch of rain in the area, it appears that the water table's high enough that it wouldn't matter if that sinkhole was 20 feet wide, it can't take any more water. That appears to be the situation. So, the, the reason I want to make that clear is because, because the injection well appears to be functional, if you do the maintenance on the injection well, it would not have changed anything about the February event, okay? It's just going to help protect what you've already invested in. So, it, it doesn't change the flooding scenario that happened in February, just want to make sure that's clear. This is more just about doing some maintenance to, to keep that thing active.
Thank you, Charlie. I think, as you mentioned, this injection well that, that you've inspected basically is designed exactly the way you would pose us design one and build one if there hadn't been one there already, is that what you said?
Yeah, I, I, you know, being an engineer, I can't say it's designed exactly because we didn't design it, okay? But it is absolutely the type of thing that we would have recommended. I don't see any problem with it.
Okay, thanks.
We actually just put three in, and we're almost the exact same type, but...
I hope that you all will get with us and talk about the maintenance end of it, exactly what we need to do to keep up the maintenance on it, so we're on the same page now.
Next slide, we're going to do, yeah, just some, some rough cost estimates, probably fairly conservative right now, but just with some contingency in it since it's not been designed. Just the 30-inch pipe was about two and a half million dollars, it was a substantial chunk to, to put that in. If you do the pipe and excavate, a half million cubic yards would have about $8.4 million. So, again, a very substantial project. Remediating sinkhole number was about $230.
And that's, you know, the, the city has proven over the years that you guys have some pretty good skills, so you might be able to do it a lot cheaper than that with your crews pitching in, but this was conservatively assuming that it was a big job that, you know, went out to the public and so...
So, those are conservative, with a contingency in right now, since it's not been designed, but it don't want to give you a blow-off number on a cost estimate at this point. Then one other thing we had looked at, to move to the next slide, well, we had some recommendations that Charlie mentioned, was repair the sinkhole. One of the things we'd looked at doing was possibly some places that will, if you have flooding around streams and rivers, there is buyout money for some of that structure, where you can take that property, you know, buy it out and turn it back into forest greenlands or, or, you know, basically area where it can flood and no damage is done. It's got to be some benefit cost ratio, but I know like the city of Fayetteville, the park downtown was all done that way. And then FEMA actually has money available through their federal disaster, disaster money is through FEMA, but FEMA administrates it, so since it's a disaster area, there is money available for that type of, of work. And I think, maybe one more that had, I may be wrong in this, but, yeah, some different funding options, the core engineers will do some, if, if, as far as, you know, some 50/50 matches on studies, if you, if you did need to bring Geotech in or do something a little bit even more beyond this, just to cover some of the costs, but the 60/35 was the, the match on buyout, if it meets benefit cost, it could be a home, if there's a business there that's repetitively flooding and they need to get out, there is some FEMA money available to try to do that. And it's got to meet the benefit cost if it meets repetitively flooding, it may make sense to, for both owner and the city to buy that property out, and there is money available for that. You know, FEMA had said, I don't know if we can get you the contact number, if it's not on the next slide, but Adrian had talked to FEMA, they basically said the city needs to contact them, yeah, this was the FEMA grant money. So, it's a semi-tie federal, 12 and a half state and 12 and a half local match. Basically, the city would want to do something like that, would need to notify FEMA that they would like to investigate that. I think we have talked with the county and Mr. Massengill, said I think they just need to update their emergency action plan, we just, that has to be current, apparently it's not current right now, but if they do that, then your, the funds are available, basically, you can apply for them. But FEMA told us, the city actually has been the one that calls them and not us, we have talked to them a couple of times, just trying to get information for you all, but that might be an avenue to explore. So, we would recommend all at least explore that or tell them, hey, it's okay for Barge to get this information for us.
Do you know who you spoke with, Adrian?
I can't remember her name.
Adrian actually did, so I can get you that.
Yeah, I agree.
I can't remember the last name.
So, we can get you that.
Thank you.
I think that's all we had as far as presentation, I believe the nation's going to say any questions, but, yeah. So, I think obviously we're ready to, can answer any questions or have discussion.
Well, so, just to kind of, to summarize it, when we started out looking at this thing, obviously, we're trying to figure out what's the cheapest way to, to have something that helps, which would have been just connect the pipe to the existing system at the fire station, okay? Which would help, but it would not completely alleviate the problem. The 30-inch pump would have prevented the February event, but it's very expensive and would be difficult to get funded because it doesn't meet the design storm. The, what it would take to actually replace all the capacity that's been built up over the last number of decades is to create another 100 acre feet of storage, you know, which is millions of dollars of excavation, not to mention property acquisition and, and new 30-inch pipe. So, very expensive. It, it isn't, it's, those don't look like practical routes just based on what you would guess the values of properties might be, so that's why if you want to prevent flooding... So that's why if you want to prevent flooding of the, the homes and businesses that were flooded, it might make sense to instead buy those properties using federal money, or TMA's money, federal when it comes to TMA. If that were to occur, then all of the properties that get purchased have to revert to green space. You can't build anything else on top of it. So I mean, they could be park, you know, but some type of green space, so that's an important consideration. But because the, the event was declared a disaster for over to county federally, there is money that's available to consider by us. There's also money to do projects like the gigantic excavation and, or the pipe, but that seems like it might be a challenge to get funded, but it's still probably worth talking with them about. You know, but it needs to be you all that initiates that conversation. Now, we also spoke with Chris, he was here a few months ago, and he's, he's ready to update that plan, but again, we'll leave the, the city's help with that. Um, the, the process of applying for the, any TMA funds can be almost coincident with that plan getting updated. And what I mean is you don't have to submit a plan and then wait months and months for it to get approved, you can submit the plan update, Chris can submit the plan update, and the very next day you can turn around and submit applications for funding. So those are the, so that's the, that's the whole story, what questions can we answer?
Back to Chris, so you're saying that we need to contact Chris to, to help with that plan?
Yeah, yeah, he'll, he'll need your input on what you think you want to go after.
Gotcha.
And then that same information is what the conversation will have with TMA.
And then I guess the city would, we would need to set up a, um, something like a system to find and learn from effective property owners if they're interested in selling.
Right.
The value of those properties and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, you're not somebody kind of mandatory thing, it's if they're interested.
So first, I think we need to contact, I, I think Chris, I won't speak on his behalf, he's not here, but I think his part is complete.
Okay.
So, um, so we could go ahead and apply, so I just need to get the information from, uh, from you guys, from TMA.
Yeah.
And what representative you've talked to, and, uh, let him come to leadership and talk to us and, uh, see what money is around there about. I'm certain everything you said is correct, I'm, I'll second guess on that. But like you said, they want to talk to us, so, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So if you can provide that information.
You bet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you know, I have a question.
Questions? Are you limited to a 30-inch pipe, or do you not do a 60 or two 30s or three 30s?
So, um.
Like the Town Creek?
Sure.
Handle them?
Sure, you, uh, that's the big question, is what can Town Creek handle? Um, so when you look at a 30, you could easily ask, well, if you're going all that trouble, why not at least 36 or 42? The, um, we, it wasn't part of our, our work to literally model the entirety of Town Creek because we would have had to have a bunch of survey data and, you know, I mean, that, that's a lot more involved. But with the data that we had, um, it appears that a 30-inch is about the size where you're going to start getting a little uncomfortable about not putting too much in Town Creek. Okay? Now, that isn't a definitive answer, but it's unlikely that you would be able to put it all there if it took a 60 or it took a 72 or it needed a box color or something. It, Town Creek probably couldn't handle all of that. So we, we looked at 32 because we were comfortable that that looked like it was okay. We have some model data for Town Creek, but not enough to say, yeah, you could do 42, but even if 42 would be big enough, it would, it would need to be quite a bit bigger. So I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but it looks unlikely that, that you can put much more than it was.
I'm just thinking, the, the days it took to get to where it was, we've been there for 12 years.
Yeah.
And we've never seen it that high. We've seen it up to the fence, now the state fence on us.
Yeah.
But we've never seen anything like it was. It was right up our door.
Yeah.
Uh, but it looks, looked like the days that it took to do that, to get a 30-inch pipe or two 30-inch pipes, it would have.
And the 30-inch.
It would have all 111 and 62.
If the, for the event that happened in February, a 30-inch pipe would have eliminated it, would not have flooded. So, but again, that's just one storm event, and it wasn't, even though it was certain that a lot of water, it happened over seven or eight days. And a typical design storm, you'd get that same amount of water in, in just a day or less.
So, what about Dillon Pond on the injection side?
Yeah.
Or the well?
Yeah.
If the throat height was lowered, your surface area would be a lot greater, right?
You'd have some more storage there.
Yeah. Substantially more.
Depending on where, but yeah, it depends on how low it was.
So the sinkhole under Dillon Pond does not go anywhere, it just, is there underwater lake there or something?
Well, it, it goes into the whatever storage is available underground, we don't have any way to.
So you don't think it happens at all, you don't think you could die?
That's what I was thinking, die and see what comes out.
You, you could try that, you know, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even begin to guess where that all was. You know, I mean, it could be, it could outlet in Alabama or it could outlet in Town Creek.
So we're saying it filled in, this flood, it filled in, the groundwater filled in, there's no way for the water to get out. It didn't get stopped up, there's, it really didn't get on top of it and stopped up?
We didn't see anything, I mean, we weren't there.
That's what I was thinking, something got on top of it and stopped it up, because it looks like, you know, that, that's a huge pipe.
Um, anecdotally, we've heard that at times stuff has gotten stopped up, that it's gotten cleaned out. Um, but we, I didn't see it as it came down, I mean, I wasn't up here every day, I was up here, you know, probably once a month.
But I, I, like I say, I've been there for 12 years.
Yeah.
And I've never seen it like that, that's the only thing I can make of it. Surface road is the big trick to math, I would say, it has to be.
I, I don't, I mean, the road's been there a long time.
Not, not the road that's there now?
They, well, it got widened, but I mean, there's been.
About tremendously.
Yeah, yeah, it, it certainly is a factor, but I wouldn't, I'm not prepared to say oh yeah, that was what did it. You know, I, absolutely, it was one of the factors that it spilled in, flooded the heck of it up. But I would still have all the businesses and the high school and.
Okay, I'm a little confused, I'm confused. I've been there 28 years, and in the year of 2000, when I was contacted about cleaning up the pond, putting the walkway around it, making it look good and all this, okay? The reason for going in there, they wanted to bring, this is what was said, they wanted to bring, okay, back then, that pond would get down low enough, the fish would die.
Die, okay.
And then, you know, it smelled bad and all that, so they wanted to bring the water up, keep it high enough so it wouldn't do that. So that's supposedly the reason they worked on the sinkhole, so the water level would have to stay high enough before it drained, is what we were telling them. Okay.
Okay.
Would they have to have had an injection well permit from TDA at that time, the water was controlled, or somebody to have done that legally?
Well, I called and there was no permit given, that was in 2000. But then the next day he called back and said, well, uh, uh, they didn't have to be right then. But I was given the information that said, and I don't know who the city engineer was then, but I was given information that said, the engineer said their best bet would be if they wanted that water level to stay up high and look good, that they would need to dredge the pond out and leave the sinkhole alone. And he said, you can't mess with that sinkhole, you don't know how much water's going through it, and if you flood that area, you're going to be liable for the people around the sinkhole. That was from an engineer.
Okay, and I, you've got to understand, I don't.
Right, you were here, right, yeah.
I love that, but I'm confused about, if that, if that sinkhole was done, whatever your terms are and all that, all that means.
Especially the injection well pipe that's out there.
Yeah, whatever that is. If that was done to keep the water level high, I'm confused.
Well, it, again, I don't, I don't know anything about the decisions that were made or exactly why they were made, okay? The, I don't know what the level was before the injection well was put in, I don't have any of that information. So as far as the height of the top of the injection well, you know, I, I can't, I can't respond to that, I don't know anything about it. I can tell you that building and injection well, I don't see any problem with that because it does protect the throat of the sinkhole. So that is exactly the type of thing we recommend as far as the location.
But that pond, it wouldn't flood before then, it was staying too dry is what I'm saying.
Okay.
It was taking it to drain.
Yeah.
In three, in three years, I was flooded three times, my driveways, not my building, just my driveways. And I, when I called about it, I, I was told I just bought myself a piece of swampy property. And, you know, it wouldn't flood before, and since February, for seven months now.
Yeah.
That, the concrete form has not come out from under that water. And, and usually, I mean, and we've not had much rain lately, usually when you would drive around them there at different times during the year, you could always stop and look at it.
It's out there, man, it is out there, man. I would have to guess it's a project.
Oh, yes, okay.
It was 70s and 80s before that back passage was built, it had more room to get out of that.
Sure.
And also, coming over the hill there on the west mountainside, when that road was built in, uh, late 70s, they covered a big sinkhole up there, the state, because they didn't think anybody at that time, that's one of those things.
Well, another thing, now I'm, I'm clueless to all this stuff that you're talking about, but we had all those pumps over there pumping that water, I forget how many thousands of gallons of water it was so often, and Town Creek handled it.
Right.
Well, I mean, can it not take an overdrain?
It can, it can, which is one of the things that we look at. The question comes, if it were a two and a half million dollar project to, to put a pipe down to Town Creek, does that, is it worth it? I mean, that's really the question, is it worth it? What I mean is who's going to pay for it? And.
Does it have to go all the way down, down to Town Creek or just to the beginning of it? Because where did they pump the water before, is that?
Before it got pumped right into the inlet by the fire extension, okay? And that's, we looked at first as putting the pipe just right there from the, the one of the basins that's across from your place, yeah, to, to, right there to that inlet or even actually closer on the other side of the street. And you could do that, uh, it wouldn't have prevented everything that happened in February, it would have been better. The challenge is that because there is a storage system there now that does serve, you know, those streets that have that storage system, if you had a big event and there was water coming through that same system, it would fill up that system, and then if more water came, it would cause potentially flooding in that neighborhood because you were using it to drain Town Creek, so it's kind of, you'd be sort of riding Peter to pay Paul. Yeah, so, yeah.
So that was the reason we're taking it all the way down there.
Yeah, yeah, it's because we, we would have liked to use just the system that's already there, but it's not available.
Or is it the beginning of Town Creek, we were talking about the home city hall?
Yeah, when we, we don't really need to begin Town Creek.
Yeah, how far down is Boyer, were you talking about?
Right, right over here, it would have been right there, yeah.
Pretty long.
Pretty long.
Another thing, I don't, in the history of the lives in the cabin high school, from what I've been told, they've never had water coming through the chimney, so.
That, that happened the same time?
Well, it's something that happens, and it's what we started noticing.
Yeah.
It takes a while for water to seep through.
Well, so it's not like water.
If the water table, and, you know, in fact, you know, you said you've been there 12 years, you've never, you've never seen it like that, well, I bet the high schools never seen it kind of go to gym either, which should be evidence that the water table just, it was so high, there was nowhere, if you have a, no Miami sinkholes you have.
Yeah.
If there's nowhere for it to go, there's not capacity of additional storage, it has to flood, I mean.
Well, what I was getting at, the original sinkhole, the, the natural sinkhole that Dillon Pond has always took care of the water up until now. This is the, you know, in the 12 years that I've been there, that something has, either it got stopped up, the drain got stopped up, because that's a huge drain, and if we just knew where that water was going, if it is going down below Town at a lower level and that drain can be opened up, you can put a bigger tile at Dillon Pond, you can keep Dillon Pond at the same level that you got it, only put a pipe twice that size in and let it go.
Um, and that, I agree with that concept, but my concern is what Alderman was talking about, if the water table is high, it doesn't matter how big the hole is, it's not going to drain.
Well, when they pumped, they pumped up the bypass and over, you know, under Oak Street there, and there was a sinkhole over there behind the machine shop that they actually pumped some of that water into as well, whenever Town Creek couldn't take it off, they actually pumped it into a sinkhole, so.
You're talking about some previous pipe?
No, in front of, in front of Langford's, uh, recor service, there's another sinkhole over there.
Um, okay.
And that's where a lot of the water, you know, bigger pumps that the site had, it was up there.
I saw, I, the only place I saw, I know with your full time, the only place I saw was.
Well, that was Grandma's water airport.
And their parking, the parking team.
You're, you're talking about a towel, there was another towel over there, a storm drain that we went in there, close to Oak Street.
In front of Langford's?
Yeah.
Recor Service.
Langford's one on the southwest corner, or, you know, north, and it's up back the northeast corner.
Okay.
We, we.
That's where you get Burger King turned around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe some of those, those two probably.
Water runs that circle.
Actually draining into the Burger Pond.
Yes.
So if you pump the water into that pond, it's going right back to the center.
Of course, that's years.
So it doesn't pump that water out.
Same, same thing, but, yeah. It just, it just goes right back in it. Because what happened was Dillon Pond filled up and the water was back flowing through the.
So if we lowered the lift on the injection well in the pond, create more surface.
Yeah.
You'd have more.
You'd have more.
If it would go dry, obviously, or, or close to it, but you would have a lot more reserve if you wanted.
You would have more reserve, I don't know exactly how much, but absolutely you would have more reserve.
Another thing, I don't think the Burger King, there was a pot of field, who didn't that, wasn't there a lot of field in there for that?
Yes, yes.
See, so there, there's additional capacity.
I think every, everything that's got.
Additional storage that, you know, that, that's developed. When I was growing up, that parking lot behind your house was a swamp.
Yeah.
It's been filled, it's all been filled in. So the more we develop and the more we decrease our capacity for storage and flooding.
I've lived there since 1986, and it's never come from the back up over that and into my basement.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
This is the first time it's ever been there.
Exactly, which is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're agreeing.
We're on the same.
Because all this development is decreasing our capacity.
It's never got that goal.
It's not just one bit.
Correct.
Exactly.
It's getting worse all the time.
And the more we develop, the more we fill in low places over there, the more it's going to keep flooding. You know what I'm saying?
You know what I'm saying?
I say, but I would like that said, I've been there since 86, that pond would go dry, dry. After that concrete was put over there, it has kept the level up and even had more water on our backside.
Is there any evidence that the, the, the work that the city did, putting in the stand pond and pouring the concrete to keep the stand pond stable, is that affecting the level of, is that a, is that controlling the level of Dillon Pond?
Sure, yeah.
Mm-hmm. It wouldn't affect what's going through the sinkhole, but it would hold the water up to, that's the water that's coming over the top of it, coming over the top of it to get in now.
That's right.
So it's holding the walk on the top.
As the level is an answer.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the level of, for.
Not when you get that much water, it's not a good idea.
Exactly.
Yes.
So in the maintenance that you're.
That pond needs to be lowered.
The maintenance that you recommend and that we do to the existing, uh, pipe, injection well, would that include, would that include lowering that level, or could we do that at the time we do that maintenance? Is that something that can be done at this time, can we make that adjustment?
Sure.
Would it make more sense to lower the level of pond than to go all the way to the round? I think that route needs to go to, the path to catch the overflow, but I think the level of pond needs to be lowered and stayed lower.
I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all, I want to go on the note that, that two years
I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all, I want y'all to know that nineteen years ago or whenever it was, we didn't, we didn't make the decision to raise that, please know that. We're not involved in that.
If we. How high is, how high is that pipe? What's the length of the, the vertical?
Looks like it's about, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We didn't.
It looks like it's about four.
All right, so if you had a three-foot stand pipe there.
It's gonna drop in nine days.
Well, but, yeah, it's a, if you, if you made it a three-foot stand pipe, you'd have to do a whole bunch of excavation that it looks like to, I mean, you can't just make it.
But naturally, that was not, that was not a pond, it was a storm drain. I mean, it was basically, it, it's what held water in storm situation and I.
So, but I.
Can you push your button now so we can?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know what the trajectory looked like exactly, but I'm pretty sure it was not twelve feet lower. You know, I mean, that when the stand pipe was put in, I don't think anybody filled in twelve feet of that pond.
No.
Yeah.
I know the old USGS map shows a pond there, but it's not as big, but it does show a pond.
Why do we wanna keep it high?
Who's we?
Yeah.
Well, me for sure, I mean, why, why keep the water level at high?
It was for that car that we had, wasn't it done for that car? To make that car there?
Well, that's what I was told, I mean, why, why would the sensible thing not be, if we can take the water level down several feet, why not take it down? Then if we have.
We would give more authority.
Well, I mean, that, that might come and set the limit.
We just cut on the wrong side of town up there. Because of that and the ballpark, but y'all remember that? We filled it and got the water out of town.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, yes, if, if we, if we decide to lower the stand pipe, can that be covered under the general maintenance, TDEC permit?
That's a good question, um, I would assume it could as long as they didn't take some specific interest, you know, from an environmental standpoint of, of decreasing what, what's clearly in the.
Is that something that we would need to decide before we apply for the permit or we have to, even to do the maintenance?
It's just the existing conversation.
Yeah, it's the opposite.
Okay.
And one other question, whenever you do general maintenance, will you check the injection pipe and make sure that there's no debris, no backups? Kind of make sure that the, see where the water's going, if the, if the water level has risen and it's stayed, it's not new, normal, will you be able to see that?
Um, if the water table comes up enough to, to prevent water from flowing in there, um, so if it happened before the pond filled up, you could see it in the pipe. You know, you could see the water coming up in the pipe, but what's more likely is that the water and water table's coming up at the same time that the water in the pond is coming up and you wouldn't be able to tell. There, you could do, you could do monitoring wells, uh, in, in various places around there that could monitor the level of water table, but I mean, that would be, that's quite an exercise. Doesn't mean you couldn't do it, that's what it would take, you have to do monitoring wells.
So, Charlie, I, I think what I'm hearing you say, if we will have another time when you can talk with TDEC.
Yeah.
If, if, if in fact, that is what the council wants to do, is to lower the pond level, uh, then it's, and do some general maintenance, it may take a permit, may not.
It, it'll take a permit to do it.
Okay, but TDEC is gonna control possibly how much the level could go down?
It, it, without talking to them, I wouldn't know, they, they didn't have any issues with doing the maintenance. I think they'd be okay without making a big deal out of it of lowering the pond level, but I can't speak to them.
Okay. So, we need to schedule a meeting with TDEC.
That's what I would do.
Why would that have a problem?
Well, they won't, maybe want wetland delineations and all kind, I mean, there ain't no telling.
If they were trying to call the water or something like that, saying, then my, I, with the being.
But they, they, the tragedy deal would take it more away than that, you know?
At the end of the day, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, if you were sitting over there on the side of the pond, do you have any hope of, of a brighter future?
Um, well.
The fans don't have much money.
They probably have a few, but that's operating stuff. There's, there's ways to mitigate it, but it's always the same question, is, is the cost worth the benefit?
How many funds does it take for everybody to come together and?
Overturn. So.
We've been seven months already.
Yeah. Um.
Look, look, let me.
Go ahead.
So, we are really, really trying to help, I, I promise, we're, we're on your side, we are really, really trying the best we can, but there, we have to go through the proper channels and, um, so we have hired Barge, Barge, and yes, you're right, we've had several meetings to show exactly how we got here and the direction that we're going and the financial obligation that the City of Livingston would have, and I think those things have been established. Now, since tonight, it is my feeling that some other issues have came up and it may very well have been just as easy to lower the pond, save a lot of money, um, and go from there. But there's a step that has to be took because whenever you start moving bodies of water, uh, whether, and the states say they're in full control, each body of water, including Dock Hill Pond, then we have to get their approval and so it will be immediate. Um, and as the late Bill Wingham would always say, government will move slow, I'm sorry for that. But I think we have to, uh, and if we didn't, we would be subject for a fine from TDEC. Uh, aquatic life, those are the things, wetlands, those are the things that TDEC is gonna, uh, take in consideration. So, um, I think you see it all the time where, uh, a state route gets stopped because there's cave, there's bats in it or whatever the case may be and I, uh, I don't make the rules, but we really do try to go by them, so. So, it appears that there's gonna have to be a meeting set up with TDEC and go from there. And hopefully, we can get that done before the October seventh meeting and be prepared to report back. Uh, in the meantime, um, we need to be able to talk to, um, with TMA, uh, to see exactly what grants is out there and what they will or will not pay for.
They won't pay for samples.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, and then, you know, exactly what the grant would be, I think you said sixty-five, thirty-five, if, if the city would be interested in buying property, if numbers would.
It could be seventy-five, team money.
Right.
Twelve and a half state, twelve and a half local.
Okay.
Could you provide us a copy of your power board?
So, those are some things that I think that we need to go as quickly as we can and, and in the most efficient manner as we possibly can, but I think those are some questions that need answers to. So, um, I will start on this as soon as you give me some information from TMA or whomever, uh, and then we'll set something up with TDEC and get something in writing, um, and go from there.
Yeah.
And I, folks, I, I, I am really sorry because it does seem like that we're dragging our feet, but it is very, very important that we get all of the information and all the facts uh, before we spend a lot of money that don't fix the problem. So, I know we're moving slow, but I, I do think we're moving in an efficient manner and as Alderman Colton brought up when we had a meeting with the Director of Schools, they have got major problems up there and, uh, I thought their engineer was gonna be here tonight, but I don't, I don't, I don't see him here, uh, and I'm certain that they're gonna, they're gonna take, piggyback probably off what the city has already provided for, to, to be able to answer some questions to the Board of Education, okay? So, that's, that's where we are in a nutshell. I really, really appreciate everyone being here, but please understand, we are doing the best we can and none of us was here when any of the new, the part was built and decision was made and I, I don't know who the engineer was, couldn't tell, I, I don't know. When I got here, we started using Barge, I don't know who it was before, before then, so.
Mayor, it was never, this whole situation did not one thing.
Right.
It's, it's many, many, many decisions that have been made over decades, it's a game. Unless you spend a bunch of money, there's things that you're gonna do that are gonna help, but, you know, it didn't get created quickly and unless it's millions and millions of dollars, it's gonna take a number of things to help.
Yeah, and, and some of the things, just like Kelly has said here, is some development over the last twenty-five years.
Oh, that's, that is.
Yeah, and so, so the development and, you know, and not having retention ponds and things of that nature, we can go in maybe a little bit deeper than that and connect to, but, uh, so I, I, I hope tonight that we have tried to answer some questions as much as we possibly can. I know it's, you know, there's not a silver bullet here that can just say, boom, just fix it, so. But we're, we're taking all the suggestions that you have and they're not, they're not landing on a deep fear, so I just want you to know that, so. And yes, Mr. Harson.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Well, during that rain, was the grain stopped up? Did you guys clean it off after that or do you know?
Uh, I, I think it was underwater and it just wouldn't help or nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it just had helped, the water table was just so high, according to, uh, Wayne P. He's a street supervisor and he's not here and I don't like using somebody's words when they're not here, but according to him, the water table was just so high, it just wouldn't take any.
Okay, well, we just talked about that a while ago, I just wondered if it might've had debris up over the, the drain.
And in fact, what, what debris was there, I think they tried and cleared off, but it just, the water table was just too high, it just would not take any more water.
Okay, thank you.
If there had been debris on top of the, I mean, that's, we could, you know, nothing good about that, right? If it's fifteen feet underwater and debris over the top of the stand pipe over the grain, I mean, how would you know that? You couldn't, you couldn't.
So, I, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight, I think that everyone's had an opportunity to talk, uh, and, and we will get back, we'll be as soon as we can, my goal would be to be able to talk a little bit more about this in our October seventh meeting, I'm not guaranteeing that. Uh, I gotta hit with several folks and schedule TMA, TDEC, and, and we will go from there. But again, we, we're not just gonna let this die and, and nothing happen, we're gonna do what we feel is in the best interest of everyone, okay? So, thank everyone for coming out tonight and have a safe trip.